Welcome to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting of January sixth. It's now about three after. As we stand for the pledge, at your pleasure, I would like us to take a few seconds to remember the late Jimmy Carter and also the folks down in New Orleans. Thank you. Let's go. Please. Okay. Rule call, please.
Mr. Brand, present. Mr. Henry, here. Mr. Regan.
Here.
Mr. Brooks, here.
I'd also look over my notes, like to welcome Commissioner Brands to the podium.
Thank you.
And it's time for reorganization, and I would like to nominate Ms. Commissioner Henry to be the president for next year.
One second.
Rule call.
Regan.
Yes.
Brand, yes. Henry, yes.
Now, remember, there's no more pay.
That's not why I'm doing it.
Yeah.
All right, next, we'll go to the annual appointments. Does anyone have any questions? John, would you like to read through those for us, please?
Sure. These are appointments which are an annual in nature. That means their term is for one year. We have the executive appointments, which is the 911 Director Fred Cummings, the Executive Assistant Office Manager Sarah Hodges, County Attorney John Brooke, EMA Director John Catino, EMS Director Mike Ashley, Highway Superintendent Tommy Humbert, HR Director Pam Cammon, Veteran Affairs Office Brian Wilson, Inspector Waits and Measures Eric Thaw, Maintenance Superintendent Steve Foster, County Information Officer Kyle Johnson, Delaware County Council Finance Committee Representative for Commissioner Sarah Hodges. We also have the Alcohol Tobacco Commission, which is a one-year appointment, Tom Simpson, Delaware County Grange Board Sherry Regan, Joe Hamilton, John Christie, Bill Whitehead, Wayne Bothell, Delaware County Redevelopment Commission Michelle Batters, Stephen Henry, Stephen Brand, Shannon Henry, Delaware Advancement Corporation Sherry Regan, Community Revitalization Economic Enhancement District or the Creed District Dan Allen, Stephen Brand, Angie Moyer, Dave Williams, Doug White, East Central Indiana Solid Waste District Stephen Brand, Shannon Henry, Emergency Communications Board Shannon Henry, Property Tax Board of Appeal or commonly known as the Pita Boa, Karen Black and Jason Litt. Do you want to have a motion to approve all those?
I have a second, but I have a question. John, I'd asked for a copy of your contract or whatever. Is it actually on retainer?
Okay. I will have my office. I thought we'd already sent that, but I'll have to ask Andy where it was, okay?
Thank you very much.
Do you second?
I have not. Yes, actually, I did. I said I'd second.
That's right.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Rule call, please. Regan.
Yes.
Brand, yes. Henry, yes. Okay. The miscellaneous board appointments. John, would you like to go through those?
Sure. These are the appointments that have, or boards and commissions that have a term generally. Airport Authority Russell Jones is a current appointee to be reappointed, Anthony Dowell on the Board of Health. We have a Civic Center Authority Board on the list, but their terms don't expire till July, so I don't know if you want to take those down or you want to wait till July to decide those.
Then later.
Okay. He Corrects His Board Lindsey Williams for illness as the adult probation officer. Earl Ammon is a citizen member layperson. Eugene Whitehead is County Council Representative. Sherry Regan is a citizen member layperson. Citizen Member Layperson is Andrew Ramirez. Convention and Tourism Board Jared Walls. Delaware County Regional Wastewater District Phil Walters and Ray Maynard. East Central Indiana Planning Council Shannon Henry. The Fair Board Dan White, Fred Cummings, Jeff Smoot, Julie Esquieu and John Catino. There is one vacancy on that board that needs to be filled. High Cap Indiana Community Action Program. That would be...
That'll be me.
Stephen Brand, right?
Yep.
Information Technology Board Stephen Brand. Liberty Regional Wastewater Board Danielle Castle. Metropolitan Plan Commission Ricky Syte and Stephen Brand. Board of Zoning Appeals Leslie Mathewsen. And there is a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals that must be a Democrat possessed on a few boards that must be politically bound, so that's still open.
So that's a request for the public. If there's a Democrat interested in serving on the BZA Board, please submit a letter of interest to the county commissioners. There's a rule there that you cannot serve on any other boards. You can only serve on the BZA. So the BZA is sort of like the judicial end of the zoning, and they can't be lobbied. That's why you don't want them on any other boards. So we're looking for a Democrat for the BZA.
Let me accept as president.
One second. Motion in a second. Rule call, please. Regan.
Yes.
Brand.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, John. Table business, we have the handbook revisions and the ordinance to approve the amendment to the current handbook. I'm guessing we want to keep those tabled since the committee is, what does Pam want to do? Keep those on the table. We have approval of the minutes, Commissioner meeting December sixteenth, Commissioner Special Meeting December thirtieth. Those minutes are not completed. An entertaining motion to table those. One second. Motion in a second. Table the minutes. Rule call, please. Regan.
Yes.
Brand.
Yep.
Henry.
Yes.
Next, we have presentations, contracts and agreements for approval, absolute title for deed sales service, Stephen Brand.
Yep. So at the last Commissioner meeting, and I spoke to Ed before coming to the meeting today, actually, just in the hall ahead of time, so there was a, an agreement given to Absolute Title LLC, and they're out of Madison County, Indiana. We have, here in Delaware County, by my Google search, five title companies, and I had multiple questions from the citizens asking why we didn't source this business in Delaware County. And as I said, I spoke to Ed previously, and Ed has some reasons on why this was done this way.
When we look back, who did the original, we did two different deed sales, and Indiana Title acted, did the deed sales last time, and they charged $1.35 per parcel. That was six years ago, back in 2018, 19. One of the odd things that we ran across, we couldn't find a contract. Kind of raised questions of mine, and I'm not the person that really likes to do, work the same way we used to do it and, and keep doing the same thing over and over. Thought to enter into agreement. The statute concerning the cost allowable is $250,000, and I did some research to see what other title companies charge, and the lowest charge that any title company charges is $250,000, and they're up as much as $500,000. So the part of the reason we went outside of County also is that there is a title company that actually does bidding and purchases property in our, in our tax sales. That was a concern, I think, and kind of like a venture. So these combinations of things that, the companies that do a lot of business through our office, because we handle all the transfers and deeds, et cetera. It would suggest we take a look outside of County for options. The other variable that comes into play is the cost. Their costs have increased a lot, not only with personnel, but the cost of the actual fees that they have to pay. For example, recording fees were increased by the state. The desert fees that they've increased in our office, transferred titles, these, et cetera. All these things have increased their costs of, the title companies are actually, margins are actually reduced because of all the costs that, between the state and inflation, those kind of things have taken place. So that's the reason we looked at approving that particular contract and present to the commissioners for approval, because we felt the increased cost was in line with what the increased cost of the County would. I've used all the companies, I sell the companies, I personally have been involved with multiple title companies, and no major issues with any of them, except for the fact that Absolute Title had experience with. They actually found an issue that a local company overlooked, was trying to refinance, it cost me tens of thousands of dollars, because they wouldn't bend the rules and allow us to use what previous title company used. So in my eyes, they gained a lot of respect, and I felt if they were going to hold me to that level, they would hold the Delaware County at the same level, and therefore, that would be the same results they lead from the fact there. So that was just some of several reasons that we made a decision to go with Absolute Title. Now, that tax, the deed sale will be much smaller than normal. I think the first one we did, we had roughly 575 properties. This one's going to be probably less than a couple hundred. Eligible is less, like 330 some odd properties, and we're only going to do roughly 200. There's a reason behind that also, because what we have is a new vendor, of which we just switched to this hall, but that's all right, and they have new employees. We have a new title search company, and we're trying to coordinate all of these departments and contractors along with the judges to make sure we're all on the same, same page when we're doing this process, because there is a limit to how long we can do these searches, and then there's also stipulation per law for doing the notices. And if we miss those notices, then the money we invest in this title search work and the work we do on our end goes out the window. So there's a lot of things behind scenes by moving parts. I wanted to let Stephen know and the public know that there is reasons for that, and I know the commissioners quite often, when they have contracts presented to them, and they receive bids, they take them under advisement, because there may be things that they know or they find out from the public, or whatever the case may be, that are variables that caution them to go in and necessarily just look at strictly the less better. So if you have any other questions, feel free to reach me in my office, send me an email, but those are just some of the few reasons that we've made that decision.
Thank you, Ed. And I do agree that not having a contract in place is not a good way to run our business, so getting a contract in place, I appreciate you doing that. I'm a big live where you work and spend where you live guy, and we spend a lot of money as commissioners, and if we can source something to a Delaware County business, I think we should try to do that. So, you know, for all the department heads out there, that would be a standard question I'm asking when it comes time to approve a bid or a quote is, you know, was there not anyone in Delaware County that could have done this? You know, obviously, they have to be competitive, and sometimes that can be a reason, but, you know, I just want everybody to know that Delaware County should be receiving our money, given the chance. Thank you, Ed.
I agree. Appreciate it.
I agree with Mr. Brand.
That's first place. We look, try to find a contract. Our original goal is, hey, did, or could you use the same price? And we couldn't find any contract.
But I do like the idea that this company is going to find something new that maybe, again, back in the old days was overlooked, so I thank you for your explanation.
Thank you, Ed. I appreciate that. Next, we have the 911 Center Chair Lease. Mr. Cummings.
This is the lease renewal for the chairs that we use in the 911 Center. Now, there's some questions that went back and we can, but basically, prior to me coming here, there was a, there was a huge problem with chairs. We were spending thousands and thousands of dollars on chairs. They'd get broken, they'd get put in the chair graveyard, they'd just buy more. Perry Ritter found a company that leases 24/7 chairs that we use, and decided to do a lease for three years. Um, the lease is up, we don't own the chairs. They trade them out every year, they change cushions, they fix anything that goes wrong.
I think back, back when this started, there was a wall of chairs.
It was. Called it the chair graveyard.
Yeah. So I, I think this is a good program that Mr. Ritter started.
So this is for the amount of $22,500 to lease. How many chairs for three years?
Ten chairs for three years. It's $7,211.16 a year, so it comes out to like $21,852, I think, something like that. That's what I have here.
And I'm going to ask you the same question, we just got done having a discussion. Did we explore to see if there was anyone in Delaware County that would...
Very, very good to do that. There's no other companies that lease these 24/7 chairs in Indiana, for that matter. And that's why we're over the border into Ohio. This is a program that they started a while ago. Thomas Shelby and Barry, through his contacts, found them and decided to do it.
So if someone watching came up with a creative solution in their local, we have a good way to get out of this contract if we approve it for three years today. I see severability in there. If any provisions of this lease is held, that's not very good grammar, invalid or unforeseeable, the remainder of this lease will not be affected by it. But it basically says that any provisions of the lease, so it'd be pretty difficult to get out of this lease as it's written.
John, have you looked at the lease?
I have. The severability goes to whether a court determines it to be illegal in some fashion, and then the court could, could what we call in the law, blue line or blue pencil, out those parts that are illegal and keep the other parts in. I didn't see a way to get around it on the end of the three-year term.
So I would like to see something added to this that gives us the ability to get out of it on an annual basis. If somebody local had the creative, you know, wherewithal to put something together.
I can reach out to the company. I mean, I, I don't know if they do that or not.
Okay. So if we don't approve this today, what happens? We're not going to come get the chairs, right?
Uh, the, the chairs will be gone as of February, yeah.
As of February?
Yeah, we don't own them, because that's when our lease comes up.
Okay.
And we'll have to spend 20, a little over $20,000 to buy chairs.
What date, February?
I don't know. Is the date, I don't have the contract.
So we have one more Commissioner meeting?
Date of lease is February 12th. We have, we have, yeah, we'll have at least one more meeting, maybe two. You want to, you want to research that and get back with us?
I will. I'll ask them if they'll put that in there, that's fine.
And John, do you want to look at this?
Yes.
Take a look at this and see if there's some language. I mean, we could sign it three years, as long as they agree to let us out at some point.
Right. We'll see what the amendment is, what the language they, they offer it.
Okay.
Or I can offer some language either way.
Why don't you offer language and, and send it to Mr. Cummings?
I'd like to look at that language with you, John. Okay. So this will be tabled? Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. All right. You've got a motion to table?
Yep.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Rule call, please.
Give me a second.
Cherry, second.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Regan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Next is, um, do you have any ordinances or resolutions, old business, the solar moratorium? Mr. Brand?
Yep. So I appreciate the commissioners put a moratorium in place three months ago, and I want to thank Commissioner Henry specifically for making that not a three-month moratorium, rather a six-month moratorium, which gives me a chance to get in and get my feet set and, and try to add value to this solar ordinance. So it's not that everybody's been sitting on their hands for the last three months. There is a, a lot of, a citizen advisory committee has been working, and they've put together this document, which Commissioner Regan and Commissioner Henry have, and it amends the solar ordinance that's in place today. I believe Kylene Swackhammer probably also has a copy of this. Is that right, Kylene? Thank you. So it largely returns to the spirit of the intent of the ordinance that was put in place by the nine-person committee when the commissioners had an original one-year moratorium in place. It does make things a little more strict than that, increases some of the setbacks, it puts a property value guarantee in place, there may be some good neighbor, good neighbor language that would be considered. So I just wanted to provide a quick update for those watching that nothing, it's not like nothing's been done for the last three months, and we have until, I believe, the end of March, isn't that right? March one, March first, thank you. So we have until the beginning of March, so we have two months to work on this. So what will happen next is the commissioners will take this under advisement that came from the citizen advisory committee and decide if this is something we would like for the planning commission to consider. We would have to have a public meeting, right? We'd have to have a public hearing, submit it to the planning commission, they would have to make a recommendation, come back to the commissioners for final adopt, adoption. I believe that's how the process, is that correct?
What happens is the commissioners make a vote to then refer something to the plan commission. The plan commission then considers that they conduct the public hearing, or in essence, the first reading on the ordinance. At there, then they make a recommendation back to the commissioners to either adopt, modify, or reject it, and then the commissioners will have the final faceover of it. So what happens is commissioners would take a look at the proposal, send it back to the plan commission as their request to make an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The plan commission then has, sets it for, reviews it, sets it for a public hearing, conducts the public hearing, finalizes whatever comes out of the public hearing, sends it back to the commissioners for their review.
Perfect. So I know that Commissioner Henry's going to take and print off the existing zoning ordinance and compare it, as will I. I believe Sherry will do the same thing. I do want to say that this National Grid Renewables that is coming into Worton, they've been pretty proactive. They've had, they've held a number of events, this Center for Energy Education, they had a public official event, and then they had two community events. I attended all three of those, and I listened and asked questions. I've talked to people that are for the solar, I've talked to people that are against the solar, I've talked to people that own property that don't live here, so this isn't just the farmers, right? There are a few farmers, but there are a lot of folks that don't even live in our community that own property here that have signed their ground up. So pretty emotional topic, but I consider it to be one of the larger topics that we're going to have to face this year, along with a few others that we can talk about at another time, but I just want to provide an update on that. So Commissioner Henry or Commissioner Regan, have you got anything to add?
No, I, I agree.
Well said.
Yeah, I, I, I like the, read through the new requirements, and I just want to go back through them some more. Thanks for that.
Yep.
Next, department heads or elected officials? All right, you guys received your Waits and Measures December report?
I did, and...
Questions?
I do have some questions, so Eric, if you could come up. This is the first time I've ever seen this report, so I'm asking questions to educate myself and possibly the public. Can you walk us through this report? Like, you have a vehicle that you did the Waits and Measures on with the scales, one correct and one total. What do we audit on a vehicle for Waits and Measures?
Yeah. Eric Stroud, or Inspector Waits and Measures, what we're doing is vehicle scales, so like when you pull your, like, out of the ECI, or E, whatever, yeah, ECI, ECR, where you pull across the truck scales, that's what those are as far as that scales.
Okay. So how many of those scales do we do? Do we do the ones out at exit 234 by Daleville also?
No. Oh, um, no, we do not. We do not do like the CAT scales. But like, there's some of the ones that are at the, at the gravel pits and the, and the ones that do the asphalt and that type of stuff, we do do.
Yep. How about the grain elevators?
Yes, we do those too.
Okay. But we don't do the CAT scales for the Class 8 vehicles?
No, we do not.
Who does those, do you know?
Uh, I'm working with, I've, I've talked to the people from CAT scales, and then also with the state inspectors, where we're not required to do those. Those are...
Those are private?
Those are private. And what, I have talked to the CAT scale people, and I've tried to get them to contact us, so we can at least come out and witness them. Because like, with the truck scales, I mean, we're, we're talking like 20, anywhere from 23 something thousand pounds to 27,000 pounds that we just don't have the equipment for.
So you're requesting to witness it, and they're not responding to you?
Uh, I've just talked, I've just been able to catch them one time out there, when we were doing some gas, we were inspecting gas pumps, and...
Well, don't give up. Stay, and if you need my help, let me know.
Okay.
So, you have portable and dormant scales, I get that. Computing scales, I get that. Under measuring devices, gasoline, kerosene, diesel tests. You tested 59, but there were seven rejected. Can you talk about the rejections on the seven?
Uh, the rejections would be if they were outside of tolerance, if, without going back and looking at my notes, if they're new installs or if they've just been recently calibrated, we have a plus or, plus or minus three cubic inches that is within the tolerance. If it's, if it's just normal maintenance where a service company had come out to test those and calibrate those, then it's plus or minus six cubic inches. So if it's outside of either one of those, those ends, then that's the ones that's rejected.
When you find discrepancies, are they typically short, or are they giving you too much gas?
Actually, they're giving us usually too much gas.
Yeah, good news. And I'll just say in general, gas prices in Delaware County seem to be more expensive than the counties around us and the state. I don't know how I'm going to work on that, but I can promise you that I will. I don't know if I, who I need to talk to, but, you know, the citizens, there's an app called Gas Buddy, and on any given day in Delaware County, you'll see gas prices as much as 30 cents a gallon difference. That's $3.00 per 10 gallons. And then Delaware County, on average, is about 45 cents a gallon higher than the state average. So I know that's not for you, I'm just telling people that that's, that's recognized. Then under other activities, you do packages. What are packages?
What we do is we go in to do package checking at, whether it's grocery stores, meat markets, anything that's, that has a net weight on it, we will go in and check and make sure. I know in the past, there was, I'd admire, there was a situation where, with my predecessor that, um, they were picking up blocks of Kraft cheese that were at eight ounces, and they were actually only packaged with seven ounces of cheese. And that was a situation that wasn't Meyer's fault, it was Kraft's, but when they had shifted, so all over the Meyer network of whoever got that Kraft cheese was being shorted.
So you're verifying food content?
Food content, it can be anything that's, as long as it's not fluid ounces, that's a little different calculation.
And then the last thing on your report today, you checked firewood. What, what's that?
Um, yeah. Firewood, it, it has to have certain labeling on it. It has to have a contact information, who, who packaged it, an address, make sure it has a, a certain dimensions, like, like .75 cubic feet, or however you, however you do that. It's one that we kind of do, as in Muncie, if you notice, in the, it's just since I've been in this job, it's gone from a handful to...
Yeah.
Almost every place has it. And it, um, it's just one of the lesser-known things that we do. Some commissioners emphasize it more, some don't. I've chosen to at least investigate it a little bit, since it's popping up everywhere here in our county, um, and...
I mean, it's a product that's been sold, so it should be...
It's a product that's been sold.
...be a person that sells it, and all that information.
Yeah.
So these are the bundles that you would see at the gas station?
Yeah, the bundles that you see at the gas station.
Like $5.99 for five pieces?
Yeah.
That's a good business.
anything that has a net weight on it, we will go in and check to make sure. I know in the past, there was... Out at Meyer, there was a situation where, with my predecessor, that they were picking up blocks of Kraft cheese that were at eight ounces, and they were actually only packaged with seven ounces of cheese. And that was a situation that wasn't Meyer's fault, it was Kraft's. But when they had shifted, so all over the Meyer network of whoever got that Kraft cheese was being shorted.
Gotcha. So, you're verifying food content?
Food content. It can be anything that's... As long as it's not fluid ounces, that's a little different calculation.
And then the last thing on your report today, you checked firewood. What's that?
Um...
Yeah.
Firewood, it has to have certain labeling on it. It has to have a contact information, who packaged it, an address, make sure it has a certain dimensions, like 0.75 cubic feet or however you do that. It's one that we kind of do... As in Muncie, if you notice, it's just since I've been in this job, it's gone from a handful to almost every place has it. And it's just one of the lesser-known things that we do. Some commissioners emphasize it more, some don't. I've chosen to at least investigate it a little bit, since it's popping up everywhere here in our county. Um, and...
I mean, it's a product that's being sold, so it should be...
It's a product that's being sold.
...be a person that sells it and all that information.
Yeah.
So, these are the bundles that you would see at the gas station?
Yeah, the bundles that you see at the gas station.
Like $5.99 for five pieces?
Yeah.
That's a good business.
Yeah. And I mean, there's, you know, you just can't just... I probably shouldn't say this, but somebody wants to sell me a truckload for 50 bucks or whatever. But that's... You're not really supposed to sell it like that.
We should think about selling firewood. So, you checked 266 packages of firewood. Twenty-three of them had a discrepancy. So, for the public, the Waits and Measures Department checked 1,730, did... Or conducted 1,730 inspections since the last meeting. So, this is...
This is... We go the 16th of the month through the 15th of the next month.
Okay, so this is per a month. You did 1,730 in a month. Okay. Thank you for the explanation. That helps.
Eric, I don't want to put you on the spot, but why don't you tell about your convention that you were able to bring Delaware County?
Um, the Indian Association of Waits and Measures contacted me to see about bringing... If I would mind bringing this here. And we were able to work with OmniSource here in Muncie to do a demonstration of the vehicle scales. I want to give kind of a shout out to them, that they were so helpful. They shut down for half hour, 45 minutes, so we could come out and do a remote thing. Down at the convention center, they did an amazing job. We had people from all over the county. And then right there at the hotel, they did an amazing job. And...
And they're set to come for years?
I think they're set to come back every so many years here. It just really worked out really nice, and a lot of people were very complimentary of what we have here in Delaware County.
Thanks for your update.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your hard work, you and your help. She skipped today.
We have one.
Um, we have a payment of claims of $4,021,725.75.
I'll second it, and I have some questions. Again, this is my first time ever looking at the claims, and they weren't... Commissioner Henry did help me a little bit this morning. And so, are these posted online? We don't post...
I can tell you, we could probably do totals. To actually do every claim would be nearly impossible.
Well, I don't agree that it's impossible. I mean, to scan these and put them on there as a PDF file, that's not impossible. And people want to see what we're spending our money on. I would like to see the claims posted, and I'll work with whoever I need to work with to try to get these claims posted online. My second question is, there's a check date column, and all of these are from December. So, have these checks been cut and sent?
Checks are approved.
Okay, thank you. And then, do we have a resolution in place? Let's say today's a good example. We had inclement weather. We might not have been able to make it today. And I understand approving the claims is time-bound, and it's important. So, were we not able to meet today? Is there a resolution in place that allows the auditor's office to pay the electric bill and the credit, you know, the essential stuff, right? I understand the TIF and, you know, some of those other things could wait. But do we have a resolution like that?
There is a... I believe it's...
We have an ordinance?
...that was passed allowing the auditor's office to pay all central utilities, electric, gas.
Okay. Could you share that with me?
Sure.
I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
There's also a statute which allows the commissioners and any public body to pay certain bills without formal approval first of the claims, including all utilities, payroll, insurance, bonds, credit cards, that sort of thing. And once you adopt the ordinance, then those will be paid automatically, subject to approval.
Okay. So, yeah, I spent about two hours yesterday looking through these. You know, I'd also like to see, there's a description column here, and I would say, as a general statement, there aren't any descriptions for the most part. I mean, there's one here, Edit Project 12. But there are a lot of claims that we have on here where there are not very many descriptions. It looks like the treasurer's office does a good job. The assessor's office does a good job of putting descriptions in there. But I would like to see more descriptions. So, my question for the auditor, are you getting those descriptions from the department heads?
Well, if we did, they'd be on there.
Okay, so you're not getting them from the department heads? Okay, so, yeah.
They're probably not getting descriptions because we attach the invoices, the receipts, whatever it is. That's how we were taught to do it. See attached, we put the receipt with it. So, it's got the explanation in the receipt.
When you turn it in.
When we turn it in. Because your claim you see is different what we turn in. We turn in the claim with the receipt, which explains what we're spending it on.
Okay. So, the process works... I'm trying to understand the process here. I'm learning. So, thank you for bearing with me for a second. The way our process works, there's a budget. You get approved to spend money. You don't have to come back for a second approval to spend money. You just spend your money. And once the invoice comes in, somebody verifies that invoice. Somebody signs off on that invoice, verifies that the services are received as advertised, whether there's a service report for HVAC or whatever it is. That invoice is signed, given to the auditor's office. And then the auditor's office puts it in this format.
Assuming they meet certain criteria, things like if they have the appropriate pay line, those kind of things. Because if not, we reject it. That goes back to them, correct? And if they put a note in the system that corrects their fees, right? Then they reschedule, that's as proven, because they're...
So, are you doing like a freeway match to make sure that the quote matches, the invoice matches the payment?
I honestly don't know the...
Okay. Gotcha. I mean, we should, right? We should be verifying that their quote matches the invoice and that it matches the payment. Okay. Do you... Either you have an objection to posting these online if we can come up with a...
We'd come up with a solution.
You could do it then. Got a lot of overtime.
Yeah, I just hate for somebody to have to do a FOIA request to get a copy of the claims. Why can't we post it online? So, I will work. I'll take that.
Are you talking about the actual claim or the sheet?
I'm... I would say that this claims register voucher. Right? So, you know, all of this stack that you guys see in my hand right here, this is for everything. This is for the payment of claims, the ARP claims...
But that's not the invoices.
It's not invoices. It's just a register of claims, which, you know, could use some...
Some of them might be a check that someone needed $50. Yeah. No, that's no problem, putting those claims on there.
Okay. I'll work on that.
And the public, if they find something and then want to come to your office to actually look at the invoice, how that procedure works?
Got to determine the process. Get this up on the web first.
Oh, I've got some ideas. Done this at other entities. Okay, so just a couple of the explanations for some of these claims, just high-level stuff. There's health insurance and utilities, jury duty, right? We paid out $6,075 in jury duty, another $274 in jury duty. These are the types of claims that we're looking at. I see a couple of other things I wanted to explain. Right? Actually, I have a question. So, there's a local public health services, Open Door Health Services Incorporated, $40,000. And IU Health, Ball Memorial Hospital, $145,000. So, we're paying the local public health services $185,000 in this claim alone.
Money, grant.
Yeah, thanks. So, while Shannon's looking at that, there's a Wheel Surtax, $177,000.
Uh, I believe these two were the Delaware County Health Department and Jamie's not here, but both of them have, I believe that...
So, we're paying out of that Health First Indiana grant?
Yeah.
There's a call today at 11 o'clock, by the way, for that Health First Indiana grant. If any of the other elected officials want to be on that call. It's 11 a.m. Yep, I'll forward you the invite that I got. I actually asked Jamie, too, if he was going to be on it. I would just join him in his office. I did not see response from him yet, but that...
I do want to get clarification. You don't want the actual receipt, the invoice, the claim. You just want the claim report? What were proven? So, are you requesting that the department put in the details of the descriptions? Because otherwise, we're going to get a lot of requests of what the...
Yeah, put the descriptions in. Yeah, we need descriptions. People are going to want to know what it is. So, I'll work with the entire supply chain here to try to get this done. I learned something when I was reviewing the claims yesterday. We have what's called a financial income tax, a FIT, where we, apparently, the financial institutions... And I just briefly studied this yesterday. If 80% of the financial institution's gross income is derived from activities, I believe within the county, they have to pay a financial institution tax. And just for this claim alone, that's $540,612.15. And it goes to the township trustees, Delaware Community Schools, the airport authority, the Albany clerk, you know, I'm just skipping through here. The Town of Gaston, Yorktown, Washington Township. It's received by the treasurer and distributed by the auditor. So, these financial institutions, this is new for me, are getting taxed, and it's going to...
The township.
For the settlement.
It is. Okay. So, that was... That was new for me, too.
So, did you second that motion?
I did.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Pay the payment of claims. Rule call, please.
Brand.
Yeah.
Brand.
That's Henry.
Yes. All right, now we have a payment of ARP claims, $1,016,291.17.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the ARP claims in a second. Rule call, please.
That's Regan.
Yeah.
Brand.
Yep.
Henry.
Yes.
Can I explain some stuff real quick on the ARP claim?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So, in the last commissioner meeting, this was handed out by the auditor to the commissioners. And I just wanted to remind folks that the commissioners received $22,169,385 in ARP claims. And this summary defines what those have been planned, projected for. Like, mental health rehab, so this is the mental health facility, That's one of the larger ones. Rorton Relief Sewer, $1.5 million. County Buildings, $1,207,356.54. I'm assuming that's for some sort of maintenance and repairs or some things that need done. Administrative fees, I'm going to dig into this one a little bit, County Stormwater, so this is Delaware Regional Wastewater District, And at the last commissioner meeting, I believe you guys parked $3.4 million in the Revenue Recovery Fund.
Yeah.
Revenue replacement fund. And that brings that fund to $4,930,020.67. So, that money is not earmarked for a project yet, correct? Okay, thank you.
And we could post that on there. That's very beneficial. Put it where they can read it.
It's small.
I believe that that is also, is part of the ARP claim. We incorporated it at December 30th, and that's supposed to be on the website. If not, then it's getting there.
Okay, thanks.
Who puts that on the website?
G.I.S. file.
Do you have this? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have payment of fall settlement, And these are payments that are made to all towns and...
All the units.
All the other units.
Blackberry.
Yeah.
Any taxing unit, right?
Any tax.
Second.
We have a motion to pay the fall settlement in a second. Rule call, please.
Brand.
Yep.
Regan.
Yeah.
Henry.
Yes. Next, we have payment of payroll for 1218 and 2024. It's $1,059,963.20.
So, I'll make a motion to approve, because I want people to get paid. And there's one thing in my experience that you don't mess with, is people's pay. But I would say that I did not see any detail for this. So, I don't know if that's... We would normally see the detail behind the payroll?
Um, we don't normally, no. Don't see the detail.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Rule call, please.
That's Regan.
Yeah.
That's Brand.
Yep.
Henry.
Yes.
I would like to see the detail behind that, please.
Uh, detail of payroll, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we didn't have anyone sign up, correct? All right, I will entertain a motion for recess. Next commissioner meeting will be Tuesday, January 23rd at 9 a.m.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Go ahead.
Thanks. So, we have 13 jobs posted outside the commissioner's office for the public's awareness. I don't know how many times people get upstairs to the third floor to look, but there are 13 jobs posted out there. A couple of things I've been working on since January 1st. I've requested a comprehensive inventory of our vehicle assets. With that in mind, there are a couple of goals there. Number one is to make sure that every county-owned vehicle is properly marked, not just with a number. It should have the county seal on it or somehow, some way say that it is owned by Delaware County. This includes take-home vehicles. I'm also asking for the information on who has a take-home vehicle, and we'll take a look at that and see if people... If there's a real good reason for people to have take-home vehicles. Working with Pam and Jim Fluke to put employee kiosk in place. I was pretty shocked when I came in and I did my new hire paperwork. I sat down and filled out papers manually, and then somebody has to take that information, attempt to read my writing, which is pretty poor, and try to get it entered properly in another system. So, we should be sitting at a kiosk, and the employees should be entering that data so we don't have to risk data entry errors, which I think we experience on a regular basis, is data entry errors. I'm taking a look at the 32-and-a-half-hour work week. There are a number of employees, and I don't have a real clear reason or explanation of why we do this. Oh, then it was done way back in the day because there were some budget constraints, and there was some sort of an agreement between the council and the commissioners to save money and go to 32-and-a-half hours. So, that needs reviewed. We'll take a look at that. I will say that as a result of the salary study that was done by the council, it changed the Fair Labor Standard Act classification, the FLSA classification, for some people to exempt and non-exempt back and forth. If you're an exempt employee, the 32-and-a-half-hour rule doesn't apply to you. You are now a salary-exempt employee, and there's no such thing as a 32-and-a-half-hour rule for a salary-exempt employee. So, anybody that's on that 32-and-a-half or was previously, now you're exempt. That rule doesn't apply to you anymore. I'm going to create Employee of the Year, or an Employee of the Month program here at the county building. I'm not going to take my privileged parking space. I'm going to give that to one of the employees in the building. I like to walk. I like to get a little bit of exercise, so I'm going to park across the street. Also, I'm going to hand out to the other two commissioners, there was a House Bill, 1381. And for whatever reason, it looks like Delaware County did not opt into this. On that third page, commissioners, there's a map. And you'll see that Delaware County's white. And this House Bill looks to me like, as I read through it, it's the state's way of trying to overrule the home rule and local authority as it relates to ordinances and specifically solar in this case. So, along with the solar ordinance that we're going to look at, I would like you guys to take a look at this and see if this is something that we might want to oppose, House Bill 1381. And we also would have the opportunity to write a letter of support in local control. But I would prefer that we completely oppose House Bill 1381. So, you guys could take a look at that.
John, I don't remember receiving that, do you?
No. Is it one in the current session?
Yes. Well, it started in the 21, John. I'm going to come down and hand you a copy.
The AIC.
So, if we don't oppose this, it looks to me like the state can give us the rules on siding and setbacks and things like that. You've heard some of the folks come to the podium that are pro-solar and talk about being a solar-ready community and that there's funding available for it. That's not true. There isn't enough funding. They didn't fund it, and I seriously doubt they're going to fund it this time. This is going to be a really tight budget season at the state, and I don't think there's going to be any extra money. So, thank you for letting me articulate a couple of things.
Sure. Do you have anything?
Yeah.
All right, motion recess?
Go move.
I have a question. Why do we recess instead of adjourn?
Because we're always on the job point for some.
Right, the Board of Commissioners can meet any time as long as they give the appropriate notice. And so, the Board of Commissioners, as opposed to some of the other boards, is in recess by statute and by operation. Meeting.
Then this leaves it open so we can meet. Just, we have to post it.
And as much as I have to.
A second.
Rule call, please.
Brand.
Yep.
Regan.
Yeah.
That's Henry.
Yes. We're recess.